Thanks, Colleen.
You're welcome.
Planning Board is now in session. It's Monday, January 10, 2022 pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting You can, prior to us going into session, part of this recording will show the public that we are attempting to get this Zoom up to full speed. But in the meantime, we must proceed and conduct our business. First item on the agenda is a discussion on the master plan committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is Latrell. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. The Master Plan Committee is meeting again this Wednesday, the 12th, and will be reviewing community historic and cultural land use and zoning and the visioning chapters. The compilation of edits from our last meeting's review hadn't been completed prior to this meeting to get it up on the Planning Board Dropbox before this meeting. So it will be, they will be those chapters. Open space, natural resources, and recreation, circulation, and transportation and housing will be on the Dropbox prior to the next meeting for your review.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Latrell. Always good. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. 325 Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods Expansion Major Site Plan Approval. This is continued from September 27, October 18, November 15, and December 13. And the continued public hearing for the special permit for lower impact development is continued from the same dates. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update, if any, on this public hearing, major site plan. Karina?
Okay. Since the last meeting on December 13, we filed the extension request for Planning Board action with the town clerk as required. We received several emails from residents of Butters and Abutters from 58 Flag Road, 68 Flag Road, 122 Deerfoot Road, 134 Deerfoot Road. Deb Demoria sent an email as well with attachments, again, related to the noise concerns at the project. If warranted later, Don, I could read them into the record or you can let me know how you want me to handle that. We also have Town Council Jay Talaman joining us this evening per request to assist in the discussion of the noise issue and the loading bays and their location. The applicant was on the Conservation Commission agenda last Thursday and continues to, with that permitting as well, there are several items that they're working on there that are still being worked out and haven't been resolved yet. So that's still pending. I received some feedback from Attorney William Pizzoni representing Ken's Foods regarding the 2014 zoning board decision that clarified hours of operation. There was reference to loading bays and the labeling alphabetically. So I received, I didn't get the plan, but I did receive a sketch, which was to help clarify to the planning board where those doors or that were labeled A, B, C, D, E, and F. We received Fussin' O'Neil review comments, follow-up review comments on January 5, and those were in review of the applicant's second submission of revised plans and documents. We also have that. And then I received an email with comments from the Open Space Preservation Commission in their discussions with the native plant meadows and how that will be handled on the project. And that brings us to this evening. And this will be public hearing number five for major site plan and also lower impact development special permit. And here we are tonight. And I see Attorney Town Council Talaman has joined us on the panel.
That's it for now, Karina?
That's it for now.
Welcome, Town Council.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Planning Board, Jay. I think this is your first joining us. And thanks for being here with us tonight. Who from Kansas is here?
In the attendee list, Colleen, we have Scott Doty, who needs to be update graded. We have William Pizzoni. W. Pizzoni, he's at the bottom of the attendees list. You can elevate him. At this point, we are just looking for the applicant team, correct, Don? Yeah.
Well, you know, we had a new submittal. We received comments back from the engineer and this is surprise, well, there's quite a few comments. Some of them are quite serious. So I would expect that someone from Ken's could address that.
We also need Jim Bourne updated to panelist from Ken's Foods, Jay Bourne. He's coming right now. There we go. So I believe that's it from the applicant team. There are 19 attendees in the public area of various, various topics. Okay.
Scott, do you want to address, do you want to address Mr. Morris's, Mr. Chair, if I can? Scott, do you want to address Mr. Morris's comment about the report? We just got back from Fussin' O'Neil.
Thank you. I think I'm on. We did receive Fussin' O'Neil's comments last Thursday, and we're in the process of responding to them. The, they are rather technical. I wouldn't necessarily categorize them as serious in sense of not being able to be resolved. There's some clear misunderstanding that I think resolve with the response and also discussion with Fussin' O'Neil, I believe will get them resolved. And we'll be reaching out to Karina. Again, we've only had, we've had these for a few business days, and we're reaching out to Karina and Fussin' O'Neil to have a conference call on them within a matter of days.
What would you like the Planning Board to do tonight?
Well, why don't we talk about other issues, Mr. Chair? Why don't we talk about other issues that are before the board that keep being raised since the technical issues with Fussin' O'Neil probably won't be resolved until the next meeting, which we anticipated since we got them on, I believe, Thursday, last Thursday? We have similar questions to respond to with Fussin' O'Neil and Lucas at the Conservation Commission as well. I think we're pretty well wrapped up there, though, once we have that meeting. However, we do have one more meeting on the books with them. But there have been multiple issues raised by this board and questions. I did supply a sketch to Ms. Latrell and to the planner, Karina, when they requested it. But it was the sketch of where the loading doors, the loading bay doors were on the building prior to the major renovation that took place, which moved all loading doors to the west side in that approval and that site plan approval. I'm not sure if that gave any clarity to Ms. Latrell or anyone else that needed to look at them and if they have any questions relative to that, happy to answer those. As far as the new emails I saw that came in forwarded by Mr. Maria, one of them talked not about site noise, talked primarily about noise on back roads and things like that, which I'm not sure they're all of Ken's, but Ken's is aware and they do police that. The other issues raised were similar to Mr. Maria's, that they hear that noise at night and sometimes during the day. Again, we're not convinced that it's totally Ken's, but we've been willing and continuing, showing continuing willingness to work with the Abutters. I've reached out to her council twice since the last couple of meetings. Well, once after the last meeting, once the meeting before that, to see if they wanted together to get together to discuss this, and I never hear back from them. I would point out that the attorney for Mr. Maria sent a letter and complained about the noise also to the Board of Health, which acknowledges the fact that the Board of Health is the, has a jurisdiction over a noise as it relates, it's not, not site plan related. And it has to exceed DEP standards. I have reached out to Board of Health. I told them we'd love to come in and sit, have a meeting with them. We're willing to cooperate with them to try to find out if Ken's is the sole source or what can be done. And, you know, that's where we are with that. But that is the appropriate jurisdiction. I believe I responded to you the last time with my, with a letter addressing Mr. Maria's expert's analysis, which he actually agreed with our expert that the sound that we're looking at now was not coming from Ken's. And in fact, it didn't correlate with when high activity was at Ken's. We want to try to move this along because we don't want to keep coming back to having this be an issue. I understand that Attorney Talaman is here at your request. I believe it was based upon the, the analysis relative to the prior site plan approval and the fact that the bay doors were not covered. In that regard, I talked to my client, and although we don't believe we're required to cover them, cover them all, they are willing to put door seals on, for the bays, if that will resolve this issue relative to the, the bays and use those in the evening when they are claiming that this noise is most prevalent. What they are is it's a door seal that comes off the back of the loading dock and wraps around the rear end of the truck so that it keeps out inclement weather, sound, dust, and all activity is contained within that. I'm sure you've seen them on some of the different trucking facilities, not only in South Grove, but in, excuse me, other communities. So I guess, you know, we'd like to move the ball and move the issue on these things. My client is happy to continue working with the Board of Health and Mr. Maria and anyone else in the community that is having this issue. But we don't want to spend money needlessly on something that isn't going to address a problem. So we need to identify the problem and exactly where it's coming from. Today, there's been no expert evidence saying where it's coming from, and that doesn't mean that it isn't a real issue for some of these neighbors. But we need to determine where that sound is coming from, what the cause of it is. And if there's something that Ken's can do to assist in that, they're willing to work with the Board of Health and DEP if we exceed those limits. And even not, I mean, they've agreed to put these four bay seals on as it's showing a good faith here to try to address some of these issues. And they'll use those in the evening, you know, in the later hours primarily. So I don't know what you want to discuss, if you want to discuss any further. I know Attorney Talaman understands that the Planning Board's purview is not to deny a site plan, but it is to condition a site plan, and they have conditions that are reasonable and proper relative to the situation. And I think what Ken's is presenting is something that is adequate, including their, their desire to continue discussions with the town, the Board of Health, and the Abutters post the approval if we get one. So I'm not sure.
I just want to point out, Don, that the Board of Health Director is in attendance as well here. Just for your information.
Yeah. And I would point out, Mr. Chair, if I could, the Board of Health letter that was forwarded to Karina and circulated to me today is the same one that was forwarded to the ZBA and which has already been previously submitted to your board at a prior, prior time in a prior meeting that's been filed. I can't remember which one.
So you received information from Town Council relative to, and help me, Karina, with the code section that talks about noise and frequency, the condition of the site plan for generating noise at night, the use of the trucks at night. And Town Council has advised us that regardless of any previous approvals, you still have to remain in compliance with the town code. And if the town code requires mitigation of the noise, then the Planning Board would be, to the extent of our authority, involved in, in that compliance. If council advises or if the board feels that noise is outside the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, then we'll proceed accordingly. So the noise is, is one one component of this project. What's?
I would.
I'd just like to go into the second component, which is, which is the engineering of the site and the multiple discrepancies that we've been dealing with over the months. Now, I think you stated that it's the Planning Board's job to approve with conditions. The Planning Board has authority to deny a project based on lack of information, insufficient information. And at this point in January, after months of this hearing, we're still lacking information, and it's technical information that is relied upon by the Planning Board to favorably deal with a site plan application. If we don't have a design that's, that will be proven to work with the necessary engineering documents and calculations, the board has no choice. It's not going to approve a plan that we don't know won't work. So that's the second component. And to me, at this time, I know we'll, we'll continue to work with Ken's and the neighbors on the noise to the extent it's in our jurisdiction. But the stormwater issues are serious, and they, they just don't seem to get any better. And the board, at least I'm considering, not continuing these hearings indefinitely on and on with no resolution and no sufficient information for us to move past these technical issues. So it's on my mind to entertain a motion to deny this project and ask you to come back when you have a design that will work and the necessary engineering calculations and documents to verify that. So what I'll do now is I'll go back to you, Bill, because you wanted to say something. But I want to open it up to the Planning Board and.
Yeah. And, 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 Mr. Chair, I do agree. It can be for, you know, insufficient information. However, we just got Fussin' O'Neil's comments on Thursday, where we are truly, who would agree that we are entitled to respond to those comments. And I agree with you, there's been some technical difficulties, and we're working through those at Board of Health as well. And they're pretty much on the same page as we are that we're going to be able to get through these with Fussin' O'Neil at the next round. So in regards to a motion to deny, I think you'd have problems because we haven't been provided an opportunity to even respond.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that tonight, but I'm letting you know that it's certainly on the horizon if this continues. And it's definitely something that I'm thinking about and have to think about for the, the proper function of the Planning Board. No, I have no intent. I, I fully intend to allow you to respond, but some of these comments are not new. And they still haven't been resolved. Let me open it up to the Planning Board. Mr. Mills?
Hi, Don. Thanks for calling on me. I understand, and I think I'm in alignment with what you're saying, Don. I do, you know, at this point, I think that there's, you know, we're talking, we'll go back to Fussin' O'Neil, there'll probably be comments with the next submission as well. So I think we're looking at at least three months to get to a, a decision or start talking about what we put between, and conditions is what I'm thinking, just knowing what the process is typically within number of comments that I saw come in. But I agree too that we, we do need to let the applicant, you know, come back with comments to them and see if they can work some things out. But I am, I am surprised at how long this is taking. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
So I continue to be impressed by the leniency and the cooperation of the Southbrow Town Planning Team. I think this, this planning department just goes above and beyond to assist with project management, with coordination. And a wise opponent would be very grateful to the planning department in this town for their, their patience and leniency. Thank you.
Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you. Good evening. I agree with my other board members. It seems we're spinning our wheels a lot here. I know I had several comments at the last meeting. So as well as Fussin' O'Neil, I would hope that my comments were addressed. And to speak to zoning code, Chapter 174-12C, that says if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed. I think the loading spaces shall be enclosed in the covered, the covers that you were referencing, Attorney Pizzoni, are not enclosed. Those are covers and fur to keep, to protect from weather, not sound specifically. So I would ask that the loading docks be enclosed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, I'm in agreement with my other Planning Board members and agree with Ms. Latrell's statement that it's our obligation to enforce town code. And I think that the, based on that, it should be enclosed and it should be part of the revised submission, which would inevitably involve another Fussin' O'Neil review. So I think this will be, I think there's that component, and then there's holistically, what is, Mr. Morris, as we think about, what is our purview? I do think we are part of the town and we are worried about holistically thinking through projects. And I think this, this Planning Board does a very good job about thinking holistically. And it's our obligation to hear the neighbors out around the noise. I understand, Mr. Pizzoni, that you are working with Ken's, and Ken's is willing to work with neighbors and the Board of Health. And I think resolution on that front, as well as really understanding where you are with stormwater management and conservation is really as a, as, you know, we want to do what's right for the town, and we want to be able to support those projects. So I'm of the opinion that you can respond to the Fussin' O'Neil response, but I think that there would be new plans that would need to be submitted regardless with enclosures involved anyway. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Let's open it up to the public. Any questions or comments from the neighbors?
We did have the health director had her hand up for a while, but she seems to have put it down.
Don, do you want me to speak to anything about you? Oh, hi.
Well, there you are, Heather. Great. Wonderful.
Evening, welcome.
Hey, Heather Alker, the new health director in town. So, and being with the pandemic, I don't always get to follow as much about the expansion and the various meetings as I would like to. But from, I definitely hear complaints from neighbors about the nighttime noise. I think recently, I think that's been kicked up. I've definitely heard a few more. And it used to be just one or two neighbors on that side there on the west side with the flag road, but now there are more who are complaining. The original evaluation was done, I believe in May 2020. There was a study that that's kind of the material that the DEP, the state enforcement, to, to help with the criteria to be met would be done through that study. But the study was not done in a completely valid way. So the study can't be used to meet DEP criteria. So we don't have any data sort of to meet DEP criteria. The study was done without a kind of ambient noise measurement. There's also, some people are saying, well, the noise was from 495 or Route 9 and not Ken's. But I think that it was done in May 2020. So I don't think there's, was a lot of traffic noise at that point, being the pandemic. So I think, I do think that we don't have the data to meet that criteria. So we don't meet it or not meet it. We just don't have the data. And I think that even without the data, we do have a significant amount of noise measured. It's unclear exactly where it's from, but we do have a significant amount of noise measured at the Abutters in that study from 2020. And I do think people complain about it at night. So I do think the enclosures are very important to be done at night. And even if it doesn't quite meet criteria, I still think that the industry needs to work on, in, you know, improving their practices for the neighbors. We have a new noise committee in town. We're drafting an ordinance and we, the committee members sent out a survey to residents, and it did not ask about industrial noise. There was a lot of other things, pets and leaf blowers, but didn't ask about sort of industry. But I will say there was a write-in section and a number of people wrote in. Only one by name wrote Ken's, but a lot put like Route 9 industry, noise at night with trucks. To me, it sounds like potentially like Ken's, but only one wrote that in. So there, I can just say that there are concerns. So there, I can just say that there are concerns about the nighttime work with the trucks for noise.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Heather, thanks for your comments.
No, those are all new. You know, the survey was just done a couple of weeks ago and the butters I'm hearing from in the past couple of weeks. I mean, now I'm hearing an uptick.
Yeah, and that's great because I'll be in touch with you because I want to find out exactly who is speaking up and who's talking about it. Because I'd like to know where it's coming from, if it's coming from the east side, if it's coming from the west side.
No, it's the west side, right? The flag road.
Well, the three I saw today, one of them was Dearfoot across the street, across Route 9 as well. So I'm going to come down to you and I'd like to see who is, you know, submitting this. So I need to know who we need to work with. Because right now I only know Deb and I used to know the other guy that would speak up. And I'd work with them. And when we were doing the first edition, we got together with the neighbors behind there. I'm not, I don't seem to be getting a response from Deb and her attorney to sit down and try to discuss this. The other thing is, the test that was done was specifically done to address the issue that Deb and the other abutter and KENS agreed onsite and up at their houses was what they thought it was, what the noise was coming from. And it was specifically dialed in on that. So it wasn't a full-blown DED noise study, because that's what was requested at the time. And KENS, they spent a lot of money doing this other report to try to address those issues. And the report, which is even now verified by Mr. Mira's own expert, is not conclusive that it's coming from KENS. Okay, so I'd be happy to get together with you, talk with you about that, what might need to be done. And, you know, we're willing, KENS has been a good neighbor. They've been there for a long time. Many of their shareholders live in the community of Southborough. They're going to want to make sure that things are done right. So I'd be, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. That's all for me, Mr. Morris.
Anyone else from the public, town officials, neighbors? What I'd like to do, and we can come back if a neighbor wants to speak. But in the meantime, let's, let's look forward in a positive way and think about the technical issues relative to the stormwater and the actual addition to the building and associated infrastructure. Let's say we get to a point where that's all set. Where the planning board, the site plan materials are there. Consultant feels it's good to go. Planning board agrees. And the planning board is in the position of taking a vote. But let's say at that time, in hopefully the near future, the noise component is still either where it is right now, many unknowns, or not resolved. So I'm asking, and we have two council here. I want to make sure that the planning board proceeds properly. So if everything's okay with the actual project, but the noise is still outstanding, can the planning board go ahead and approve the project? Can the planning board, we're hearing from the neighbors and some of the emails, are expecting the planning board to deny the project until the noise is resolved? Or they're expecting the planning board to resolve the noise issue? So again, if we get to a point where if everything, everything else is fine, except the noise issue is still outstanding, what what is the proper way for the planning board to proceed?
I don't know if that's pointed, that question's pointed to me or to Attorney Callaman, who
It's both. It's both, Bill. It's both. But if I had to bet, I would have, I would have guessed that you would tune in first. So go ahead. We want to hear your opinion.
I am suggesting that the reasonableness of putting these seals on the back of the truck to cut down the noise on those four bays at night would be sufficient and appropriate to reduce the noise. And if those are the bays that they were using at night. I also think that a condition that would, you know, KENS would agree to continue to work with the Board of Health and the community and the neighbors if it doesn't resolve it and see what else they can do. Don, just so you know, KENS is also probably going to try to move around when traffic's there if they can and other things as well that don't necessarily occur every night or every day. But they may have some control on it. And I know Jim's been looking at that to see if there was some way to work on things like that. And that's where I would think he would move forward with conditions such as that. I don't think enclosing all those bays so that the whole trucks are enclosed is what is intended by the bylaw, especially when I know when the bylaw was written and what would be considered reasonable by the court. And with that, I'll just turn it over to my brother, Jay, Attorney Callaman, who I'm anxious to hear what he has to say.
And again, this is, this is, you know, just an open question. We don't have to resolve or agree on the way forward at this point. But it's something that we, I think the planning board is going to need guidance on. For example, if the planning board says one of the conditions is that you have to enclose all the trucks. Do we have the authority to do that? Go ahead, Jay.
So I think that's an interesting question. Certainly, the site plan review, I think in the very first section of the site plan review bylaw, it talks about approved plans while ensuring compliance with the zoning bylaws. So there is an element of it, even if noise isn't specifically spelled out as an issue which you review under site plan review. Certainly, looking at a plan for compliance with the bylaws is within your purview. Similarly, under major site plan reviewer requires submission of plans with respect to loading and unloading. So there would be a need to review those for compliance with the bylaw. So and here's where I think it's important to, there's, there's hard and fast compliance with the bylaw. And then there's addressing the issues that the bylaw is intended to facilitate. So here, I think we have under the particular loading/unloading requirement, the sentence in particular says the loading space may use, it's actually, so if located within 50 feet of a residence, a district, or if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed. So if you're determining just basic compliance, I think we still have to do it through a lens of what was intended by this bylaw, so that that will help guide you in terms of basic compliance. I, I think everyone would agree that that particular sentence was intended to address noise, particularly in the evenings. And so even without reviewing whether or not the noise generated by the project meets a particular DEP standard, you can use that, the intent of that bylaw, if in fact you agree that that is the intent, to help interpret what this particular bylaw means. Because I've already stated that compliance with zoning bylaws is certainly inherent in your authority to approve a site plan. So we have a few ambiguous terms in that bylaw. The frequency is an ambiguous term to a certain degree. It doesn't say what high or low frequency is. It talks about enclosures. It doesn't say exactly what is meant by that. And it uses the term loading space as being enclosed. And it doesn't particularly interpret that either or spell it out particularly. So this board would get deference to any reasonable interpretation of its bylaw. So as you review the site plan for compliance with zoning bylaws, I think it's entirely within your jurisdiction to review, to come to a determination as a board as to what is intended here and whether or not the project complies with it. I think you also have the authority then to impose certain conditions, even if those conditions aren't particularly technical as to noise compliance. I think having a backdrop of knowing how much noise is at that site may help you as you shape those things. And I think that that's why I think the further review of noise that's been discussed tonight, I think, will be helpful. Ultimately, I think we've already heard at least two board members state what their interpretation of enclosure is. It's not for me to state what my interpretation would be. But I think if all of you arrived at a reasonable interpretation that had a, that said that what they're proposing is or isn't an enclosure within the spirit of this bylaw, you're going to be entitled to deference there. So I think it's certainly something that requires some further review and some further thought on it. I think we can look at other warehouse spaces. Certainly, the big warehouse terminals that we see these days, it's really the trucks are outside and then they pull up to a bay. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't interpret this as requiring a more significant enclosure for a particular bay. I could read it a number of different ways. And ultimately, it only matters what, what this board cares about in terms of a reasonable interpretation. So, long story short, it's within your jurisdiction to review compliance with that bylaw and to interpret that bylaw and to have that factor into your ultimate decision, or at least a component of that ultimate decision on this matter. So.
I think that helps, Jay, especially at this point in the, in the process. Anyone from the public?
I don't see anybody.
So the current approval period ends on January 28th. Planning board has a meeting scheduled for January 24th. So if we agree to that, then we would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to 7:05 on January 24th. Is that, speaking to KENS, is, is that a reasonable time to come back? Do you think it, you need more time to have a productive set of answers and documents so that we can show some real progress?
From my perspective, I think it is. But from the engineering perspective, I think I'd have to have Scott weigh in. I know he's had some preliminary discussions with Fussin O'Neill from the conservation side. I don't know if anything started yet here and if he'll be able to respond and get answers back to them by the 20th. I think that's what, two weeks, Don?
Yeah, two weeks. Two weeks. Today's the 10th, at 14:24. Yep.
Well, we, we expected complete our responses within 24 hours here and would like to go over them step by step with, with Fussin O'Neill this week. And presuming they're okay with the, our responses, then perhaps it is enough time.
Scott, is it enough time with covering the outdoor bays that are going to be used at night?
Well, thank you. I'm speaking in regards to the stormwater items. I haven't had to, if we need to add a site plan or something associated with the noise, I don't know. Right now, there's no indication that's necessary. So I don't know how to answer that, quite frankly. I'm sorry.
KENS most likely will be moving forward with the premise that those seals are adequate based on case law. And, you know, we'll be looking at it, you know, and we'll get to the data on it and specs for all of them and where they would go on the plan.
I, I do believe that if those are going to be added to the sets of plans, I do know that we have a very active construction team involved that should be able to provide adequate shop drawings, kind of details that would, that could be reviewed. And I guess, Andy, I don't know what timeframe that would get flipped around in terms of review. I suppose we, if we're going to add that to the plans, Bill, we should do that immediately and send that through also with these revised plans that we're doing at Crow. We've got some comments from Ms. Latrell, of course, that we're making some changes on. But there are some elements in response to Fussin O'Neill that change plans also.
I'd also like to just point out that, just realize that I know the meeting's two weeks away, but revised submittal would have to be, you know, by Friday the week before. You know, we need seven days to get it to the planning board and allow them time to review your revised submittal.
That would be the end of next week. Mr. Morris, I would suggest that we would, we would shoot to do that and get everything into you and discuss all this with Fussin O'Neill and make the date. If we find that we're running up against it, we would grant both the request for continuance and an extension on it, on the timeline to your next meeting, if that's what everybody was getting at, if we were going to have enough time.
And I also think that that date that we talked about next Friday also works out okay with the corresponding through, through the Conservation Commission process also. Their, their next meeting for the board's information is the, is the 27th, I believe.
Is it my understanding that you have to do a flood study?
No.
For conservation?
No, they've, they've moved away from that. You mean redo the FEMA maps and everything? Yeah, they moved away from that.
But there isn't a determination yet. But there's not a determination yet, correct?
From the conservation?
Correct.
No, no, we have another meeting scheduled with them. But they've moved away from the desire to have that study done and completed because of the expense and the timeline that it would take to do it, where it doesn't provide any upside to anybody at this point. What they're looking at is, and we've reached out to one of the butters behind KENS. As many of you recall, there's been a water issue in this area for many years. And part of it was due to the beavers blocking up the, the brook that's on the east side of the project. And we felt that the money would be better spent at this point to reduce that delay in the flow of the water by working with the abutter to take out the little drainage cover that's there where the cows used to walk across it. It's blocking the water now and it helped move the water and actually lower the flood plain and everything. So that's
Will that be, if that does happen, will that be reflected in the revised plans?
I know it would be put on as a condition to discuss the conservation. It wouldn't be on your plan or your approval.
It would not be on the Conservation Commission plans, Corinne, if that's your, maybe if that adds to the answer. It's a multi-party process. It's a town and other butters, not just KENS Foods, that would need to participate in that kind of process. Though it may be able to be done under a condition with the Conservation Commission, it might actually need other actions itself as a separate project.
I have a Conservation Commission, which we
But it doesn't impact stormwater management calculation?
That's correct. This is off-site. This location is off-site. Yeah.
I'll just, I don't want to get into details, but
I'll just, I don't want to get into details, but. Or the the real details here, but condition uh or comment number twenty three has to do with. A discrepancy of six inches. A half a foot of height. Relative to the storage capacity. And. Either you model, what they're saying is either you model the the performance of the system based on. A three point five foot height. Versus. Four foot height. If you're. I don't see any way that you're going to talk your way out of that.
If I could address that, Mr. Chairman. Um we have the calculations that show that that extra three feet is immaterial to, and I I know I discussed this with Karina at one's point. Is immaterial to the storage because the storage is controlled by the outlet control structure. In fact, I've got the calc- we we did the calculations ourselves internally when we learned that the system was five inches, excuse me, six inches higher. Or point five five feet higher. And I have those calculations that we're providing the to Fussin O'Neil to show that it does not affect the peak rates runoff, nor does it affect the the volume. It's. Whether or not it's there's one foot of stone or six inches of stone underneath the system. Ultimately, the system is controlled by the outlet control structure. Not by that uh that volume, though it point it's pointed out in HydroCAD calculations. It does not affect the hydrology.
But you're using it as capacity.
Also, I'd be happy to copy uh the uh you also, Don, if uh Chairman should be, if you'd like to see that.
That's all right, but. I'm just saying. We you have to and and Fussin O'Neil. Will rely on the calculations and not uh assumptions. So. I guess. Once again, the planning, uh I'll ask the board if if uh we want to close the public hearing. Tonight, or if we want to um continue the public hearing. Uh to the twenty fourth at seven P M, which is what I would recommend. Seem to be um. Trusting that uh. Ken's will. Make significant progress on these. Technical matters. So that when we come back on the twenty fourth. We can see uh. Hopefully, the end of the um. The end of the tunnel on this uh. Design. Any questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Karina.
Don, there is a hand up um. From one of the attendees from the public.
Okay.
Um it's um, I believe it's Tim Lit. And he is now elevated but has to unmute.
There you go. Hopefully you hear me. Tim Lit, Woodland Road. Um I don't want to drag this down a a beaver hole. But I've heard beavers come up both here and at the Conservation Commission, and I just thought I should note for people's reference that it turns out that. Control of beavers comes under the domain of the Board of Health. So anything you do has to work through them. It's a sort of odd thing. That's it for now. Thanks.
Thanks, thanks, Tim. For clarification, Don, I don't we don't believe the beavers are there any longer. They were relocated and uh the issue resolved. It's just a matter of moving earth and a culvert now.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I think the only comment is that uh again, I think. You heard from um our town council that we have the authority on the noise to request the covered. Bays. Um you heard it at least. Very vocally from two board members. I'm starting to lean that way myself, so I hopefully. The new plan is going to have uh something significant. Uh for the. The bays in the back other than just seals. Um that's all I had to say.
If if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh. I think town council will agree with me that the request needs to be reasonable to address the issue. And there's plenty of case law to show what reasonableness standards are. I think to cover those totally would be inappropriate. And Ken's probably willing to take that chance. I'll have to find out from them.
If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to continue the hearings.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue the public hearings for three twenty five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food. Expansion major site plan approval. To uh January twenty fourth. Two thousand twenty two. At seven oh five P M and also continue the public hearing for. Two twenty five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Special Permit for L I D. For seven oh five. As well on January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two.
Well, second. Motion's been made and seconded any discussion. Hearing on all in favor. Boris, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Pull the hand, yes.
We'll see you on the twenty fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, continued public hearing, two hundred Turnpike Road. Snow removal landscaping contractor facility, major site plan approval. This is continued. From November fifteenth, two thousand twenty one and. Public hearing for. Special permit for lower impact development. Two hundred Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility also continued. From November fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. We'll ask the town planner. To um. Update us. And. Share with us your. Conversation. Uh with the proponent uh just a few hours ago.
Okay, first of all, um. For the record, I'd like to point out that Andrew Mills has filed Mullins Form for missing the. Uh public hearing on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. Um that's been filed with the. Uh town clerk indicating that he's listened to um all the information and reviewed information regarding that public hearing uh for this project. To bring you up to speed. We have. With me. So the last public hearing was on November fifteenth and continued to this evening. Um an extension request was granted to uh extend the um approval period to January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. We received um. In December, mid-December, we received an email um from the. I believe the new owner of two oh six Turnpike Road um. Uh regarding traffic concerns. Um there is an easement that. Um two hundred turn, two oh six Turnpike has um to allow the um. People who own two hundred Turnpike to go across the driveway in the parking lot to access two hundred Turnpike. Um that gentleman, I believe, is in um the attendees room. Should he have any questions? And he has. Requested that the um approvals be not that the permits not be approved uh due to traffic concerns. We also uh received an extension request from uh Mr. Jonathan Crandall. They uh. The engineer had fallen ill for a short time, so he was not able to um. Provide updated submittal. Uh as you recall, a first submission was submitted um. Back in October and they continued. Um to a public hearing and then continued. They skipped so that they could have time to address all the comments that Fussin O'Neil had. In their review and um to allow them enough time, it was continued to this evening, but unfortunately, like I said, the engineer. Um was sick in the interim. Um so they are um in uh Mr. Crandall is in the audience um to speak to. Uh the project and the status and, you know, where they're going with this. Um I also believe there is um. A representative from the Department of Conservation and Recreation in regards to the comments that um. The D C R had. Provided uh for this application. And. Let me see if the engineer is here as well and Mark Santor, the engineer is also here. Uh in the audience, so you might want to elevate him as well. Um if there's anybody else related, um. John Crandall has to be upgraded. There we go. To panelist. You see him there? He should be coming. See, okay, and um Egon Zhao, who you see at the bottom of the screen, he is the owner of two oh six. Um Turnpike Road, a butter to um the applicant here. So I didn't know if we wanted to elevate him yet, um but he there he is. Uh and I also just want to point out, um just for the record, um the applicant team should be aware that um conservation. Needs to be contacted. Um I don't think you submitted anything for a stormwater management permit or a notice of intent. Uh the conservation agent asked me to point that out to the um applicant team. That they are awaiting some kind of information from you regarding those permits. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. Houlihan.
Yeah, just a process question. So I'm in the Dropbox. I didn't see a response to the Fussin O'Neil. It was one received? That I missed?
There is one for the original submission. Which we are waiting for a revised submission so that it can go back to Fussin O'Neil.
Perfect. Okay, so.
Not yet.
So at this point, we have no. Uh additional information. From our. From the last public hearing in November. Is that right?
Uh not a new submittal and we don't have a review of a new submittal, but we do have um. Email received from a butters.
Okay.
And I see attorney Michael Norris, who represents um two hundred Turnpike is also here.
Okay. Unless the board objects, um we should hear from Mr. Crandall. And anyone else that wants to speak, but um. And also from. The D C R, but. As far as um. Getting into a lot of detail, it's probably not appropriate since we don't have the revised submittal. So why don't we go with uh? Mr. Crandall, if you're. If you want to speak.
Sure, um uh thank you, everyone, uh for having us tonight and um. Uh I won't say much, just um Mark Santor, who was the engineer of record is um he's he's um, you know, wants to say a few words. He had some conversation with D C R. Um Mark um did did fall ill, so he was um, you know, we're unable to to wrap things up, but he'll he can share his progress. He's he's close to um. Having a response into Fussin O'Neil. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um thank you for um understanding. I I I got COVID a couple of weeks ago. Got a real, real bad case. We ended up in the hospital and um doing a hundred percent better now, thank God, and um. Back to work and we've put some significant time into the project, but I I didn't quite get over the finish line with revised plans and um. But I I did get a chance to speak with the D C R, which I I see as. One of the very most important um. Comments, not not that Fussin O'Neil's comments weren't important, uh they're all addressable and and um. And and I I believe with just, you know, standard revisions, I I can get to uh compliance with all of those comments. But in the the D C R comments were a little different because it 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 um involved the chlorides in the salt, which can't be typically treated through. And end of the pipe solution like a stormwater management basin or infiltration or, you know, you can't filter it out. So we. Went went deeply into this. Um John and I consulted with with some experts and I I do have some experience with this. I I. Um come from a a background of toxic use, toxic use reduction and um. I I do believe in reducing pollution. Rather than treating pollution and as a result, we came up with a solution where we we want to um. Uh on the brine tanks, we're going to be creating a um containment basin that they'll that they will reside in. To um prevent the release of any salt rather than try to collect and treat the the release of salt. And I I spoke with the um representative from D C R about that solution today. We had a good good conversation and um. Promised her that we would. Provide these solutions in detail on the plant and get them into the public record for their review and. Um I also read the letter and carefully um. You know, looked at all the all the um concerns of D C R and uh so. Couple of them are are relatively easily resolved, the training. Uh John has a great training program. He he has. Great pride in in his his training with his people and he's a leader in the industry. The town of Lexington had him today. With his group to to train their people, so we're we're um, there's no problem with with incorporating all of the um. Salt management practices into his operation maintenance plan and also uh training his people to properly handle those, the brine and the salt. We are going to um. Design the salt shed in such a fashion that will prevent any water from entering or exiting the salt shed. Which will prevent any runoff of water from the salt shed and and again. Put us in a situation where we don't need to treat anything, where we're just gonna can can pre- prevent anything from from um spilling to begin with, so we don't have an issue with any. Any treatment. So um we'll provide details on that to 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 the town. And then through your consultant, you can review those solutions and I without getting into any more detail, because we don't have revised plans, as the chairman said, I. I would like to ask for the continuance and and then give us the time to address everything and we'll get back before you with with the solution. At um a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um Ms. Kelly from D C R, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Um very briefly, I just want to um take a second to um firstly thank the board for taking D C R's comments into consideration. And um I'd also like to thank the engineer and the project proponent for taking the steps that they're planning on taking to alleviate our concerns. Um I think D C R will be very happy with the outcome and the the steps that are going to be taken. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Morris, Michael Norris.
Council, welcome back.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Uh I would suggest that we just continue the meeting for the couple of weeks. And at that point, we'll address all the issues, including this uh supposed traffic issue uh from the butter. I know my client has been in contact with them and we'll. Continue to uh be in contact and try and get everything resolved by the next meeting.
That's good to hear.
Don, we also have two members of the public with hands raised. Uh one is in a butter.
Yep.
Hello, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Uh Happy New Year. So uh. First, I want to uh let you know that uh my name is Arkon. And I'm the co-owner of C A C Auto Group. Uh we recently uh bought a two oh six Turnpike Road. And we are going through our like own permitting process for our business. And I want to be in South Baltimore for this meeting tonight, but I'm also stuck in in Atlanta due to the COVID. But however, I it is important for me to have my voice heard. So John, like the owner of two hundred, spoke to me when I purchased the building and it told me. That I need to not use my main parking lot because he needed the space for the tractor trailer. Traffic to make large turns around the corner and to enter his own property. I also talked to the previous owner of two oh six Turnpike, Sandy, and she agreed to be on the meeting with me tonight to help me. Uh to help me like explain my concern and there's a historical hi- historical use of the parking space. uh, to help me like, explain my concern and there's a historical, hi- historical use of the parking space at two oh six Turnpike Road. So um, Sandy also had her own concerns regarding Jones J.C. Grants, the owner of two hundred Turnpike Road. He spoke to her many times um, before getting his ZBA approval and told Sandy to her face that the only traffic he expected to have up and down the road was large pickup truck traffic. That was only for plowing and sorting. He did not state that he was hauling landscaping trailers at that time. When I read the application, I do not see where John alerted anyone that he would have tractor trailer traffic regularly up and down the road. And he also stated only a possibility of having landscape trailer up and down. This is not what he told me. Two hundred Turnpike Lo- Road has a cross directly through my main parking lot to get to their building and uh, pickup truck traffic is very different than tractor trailer traffic. I believe that if John had been honest with ZBA and the neighbors about amount of the amount and the regularity of the tractor trailer traffic up and down the road, that the neighbor includes Mrs. Lee's and there's a previous owner of two oh six Turnpike Road, then they would have objected to his application and his permit would not have been, would have been denied already. Besides that, um, the, the traffic, like this traffic eliminate, eliminates my ability to park in my main parking lot, interfering my parking and impacting my property value. Both things that John said in his application would not happen. So driveway is not wide enough to have truck, tractor trailer traffic up and down. So driveway is thirty one, thirty one feet wide when it meets Middle Road.
Excuse me, Arkon, um, we're starting to get into uh, uh, more details than we need to tonight. Uh, Attorney Norris indicated that um, uh, his client would be uh, meeting with you um, and hopefully resolving it. So uh, I think you've made a very good presentation and brought uh, some of the details and your concerns to the board. And we hear you and um, I think we understand, when I open this up to the board, they're more than uh, willing to uh, ask you questions if you want. But um, I, I just don't think it's appropriate for us to get into a whole lot of uh, uh, details uh, until after you have an opportunity and uh, Mr. Crandall's and, and his uh, attorney have an opportunity to um, discuss this with you. So I think you've made your point. If there's anything new beyond what you've said, um, we'll hear it now. Otherwise, uh, I'd like to keep moving.
Um, besides the traffic, I also concern about like the sorting in the snow, how he gonna handle that? Cause I'm afraid, cause I'm, we are like downhill of his property. What we are afraid is so all the salt contaminate my, my property and it's gonna kill all the greens. So does he have solution of that?
Okay. So we're not gonna address those tonight, but we're hearing your concerns and they are, and hopefully um, when we come back, um, these, these matters will be properly addressed.
Okay.
All right, uh, anyone else? I see Sandra, hand, hand raised?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Oh, hi, good evening. Um, I'm the previous owner of uh, two oh six Turnpike Road. And I just wanted to um, reiterate that um, I had many conversations with John. Um, I wish that I had um, been more diligent with going to the ZBA meetings and whatnot, because the traffic is a huge concern. And it is not um, in my opinion, what was applied for at the ZBA. So um, as, as the new owner mentioned, there's a big difference between tractor trailer traffic and pickup trucks. And it was always represented that I'm just going to have large pickup trucks that have plows on them and salt trucks. But the tractor trailer traffic is significant. The driveway is too small for it to safely traverse. Um, tractor trailers and it's concerning. I've talked to the chief of, um, the fire chief about it. He has his recommendations in front of the board as well. I just think it's very important to um, to get this on um, on record. That's all. That's the reason I'm here. I'm, I'm very, very sick, so I thought I'd help him tonight if I could.
Thank you. I, I just have one question. The appeal period for the ZBA decision, that's long gone now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and you know, I really started paying attention when um, after, after um, that was permitted. Um, I, I kept getting a knock on my door asking me to move my cars because tractor trailer traffic needed to come in and out. And um, and it was bringing salt deliveries that filled the entire um, area up there, the whole parking lot with um, salt. And I had called um, Karina and he didn't have permission to even be working um, out of that building yet. And um, and the tractor trailer traffic had already started. So it's very concerning. Um, I talked to John and told him that I didn't have a choice but to oppose um, due to the fact that I don't feel his application properly represents the tr- the traffic. And a traffic study was done and required by the ZBA, but the traffic study does not um, include the delivery tra- the delivery of his goods, the delivery of his salt, the tractor trailer traffic up and down to his building. It only um, studied his plow trucks going in and out. So it was very um, pick and choose what it, what it um, studied. And um, so I'm really concerned about it.
Thank you. Uh, I'll open it up to the planning board, uh, Mrs. Hulahan.
Well, you're mixing it up, Mr. Morris.
Everybody.
Keeping us on our toes. Um, thank you. I appreciate the feedback and um, the, the letters that uh, Karina and um, that are in the Dropbox. So thank you for those and gives us the opportunity. I think it's premature for us to really make any comments until we have a revised submission from the applicant, since the last time we've seen anything was November and then we had the Fussin' O'Neil um, response, which is more technical. Um, but it was really, it's really infor- good information on the insight from um, the, the shared residence of the, the easement of the driveway and important considerations as we move forward. But I think at this point, uh, we, we can't really do much um, and, and discuss because there's really nothing to discuss. Thank you.
Mrs. Latrell, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. Is there salt there now?
No. No, there's nothing there now, is there?
Um, yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, may I speak for a minute?
Yes.
Uh, this is John Crandall. I just want to share a few things. Uh, first off, um, the tractor trailer traffic, um, we do need resupply of material, so that does come and go. Um, we weren't aware that we, 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 what they did was they brought in a few loads of um, bag products. So we're, we're concerned about supply chain issues. They've run in pretty much the season worth of bag product, bag salt product um, up to that location. So that's why there was like a couple of days where these trailers were coming in and out. Um, and then I had actually gotten a call from us, I think, um, I think Sandra had, I'm not sure, but somebody called and said that this was an issue to um, the town. So I, I had a couple of conversations with um, the building inspector and the building inspector took a couple of weeks to get back to me on letting us know if we could store there. And um, and before they even got a final decision, we, we pulled the material out of, off that site. So there's nothing there as far as bag product or anything. We, we got it all out of there, because uh, my own ignorance, I, I wasn't aware. So I, I pulled it off the site. Uh, but in, in a general, you know, and as I did, I've, I've addressed this with Sandra, um, who was a previous owner. In a typical season, we don't see tractor trailer traffic throughout the entire year. We get it, you know, around the, around the November time period. And then as resupplies needed, just like a DPW yard, we would have to resupply some salt. I also just want to share that I, I did, when the new owners took ownership, I reached out and uh, asked for a meeting and I met them on site. I wasn't aware it was actually the owner. I thought it was just the um, the site manager. And I, I let him know, you know, as far as what we're doing and, and, you know, as far as our construction on the property and brought in all the survey just showing the, the easement that ran through it. And he had several vehicles for his car, car, uh, used car sales lot, whatever, were parked in the easement, constructing our pathways. So that's why I just, I said, you know, I'm not looking to take over this entire piece. I just want to be able to get my vehicles up and to the property. So that's, that was a conversation we had had and he was, he was very kind and polite and everything else. And I, I, I actually thought we had a great conversation, but that's changed a lot, obviously, in the last few weeks. I did reach out this week just to see if we could have a conversation again and, and he um, he wouldn't have a phone conversation with me. So um, I'm, I'm very, I'm concerned just because I'm being uh, it sounds like I'm, I'm being made as a dishonest person and that's one thing that I um, really that's, it's not who I am. And um, yeah, so that, that's upsetting, but regardless, we'll address the concerns and we'd like to work with the neighbors for um, to try to resolve any of the concerns, obviously. So I appreciate, yeah, the time.
Yeah, I don't want to get into much more detail. I think both sides have made your points. Um, and let's uh, let's see what progress, if any, can be made between now and um, the next meeting. Uh, is, is there a um, uh, extension form that can be put on the screen?
Yes. Colleen, are you launching this screen share?
Yeah, um, is it from the?
On the Dropbox, yep, under two hundred Turnpike. There's a document that begins with zero, zero dash. I, maybe I can do it too. I don't, let me see here. You want me to do it or you found?
No, I have it.
Okay.
Under two hundred Turnpike.
Yep, it's uh, should be zero, zero dash. Um, and it'll say extension request.
Got it.
Okay, excellent. There we go.
So this requests an extension, a continuation of the public hearing to January twenty fourth with the understanding that the um, approval period is extended to February eleventh. And that's the request signed by, is that Mr. Crandall's signature?
Yes.
So
Moved.
If the board wants to move on to acting on this, we can do that. If there's no objections, Mr. Mills?
Moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. I'm sorry to uh, extend the approval period to February eleventh and the, continue the public hearing to January twenty fourth. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell.
Lihan, yes?
Okay, thanks very much. We'll see you.
Mr. Chairman, do I need to do another one for the special permit for it? Because I think that was just for the site plan.
Oh, that's right. I did not mention the uh, we didn't mention the, the special permit. Mr. Mills?
I'd like to make a motion. We continue the public hearing for two hundred Turnpike Roads, no removal landscaping contractor facility. Special permit for lid uh, to extend it to seven PM on January twenty fourth.
Let's make that seven, ten if we could.
Oh, so seven, ten, sorry. Seven, ten PM on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. That would be to continue the lid, special permit to the twenty fourth of January and the approval period extended to February eleventh. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes? Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that Sandra has her hand up. I don't know if we want to hear from her before we close this.
No, I'm sorry. That's on me.
Start the vote.
Never mind.
We'll start the vote again. Uh, uh, any discussion, hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yeah.
Lihan, yes.
Okay, we'll see you on the twenty fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is uh, a continued public hearing. Um, One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University Collections Storage Building, major site plan approval continued from November uh, fifteenth, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And the uh, special permit, public hearing for lower impact development. Harvard University Collection Storage Building continued from November fifteenth and December thirteenth. Uh, if you remember from our last public hearing, this was uh, all set. Uh, the um, uh, conditions document was prepared, uh, draft by um, the town planner and reviewed. Um, sent to the uh, proponent with uh, their acceptance. And so uh, unless there's something new, um, and we, we will hear from uh, from Harvard uh, before we take action, but it would seem that uh, unless something's changed, the um, it would be appropriate for the board to um, approve the site plan and the lid with uh, conditions. Karina, go ahead first.
Sure, um, uh, Colleen, we need to um, disengage Kelly Frida and Sandra Call again from the meeting. Come back to attendees. Okay. More. All right, and we need to upgrade Matthew Cody to a panelist. Anthony Paprocki. Um, I believe um, Alan Belniak.
I did him. I don't know why. Oh, there it is. Okay. And um, I think that, that was all that was on my list.
Um, this is Al. I'm not sure why I'm being promoted as a panelist. I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to um, if Diane, can you tell me who else is supposed to be with you? Um,
We're all here. Yeah, we're all here, Karina. Um, myself, Matt Cody, Tony Paprocki, and Kendall Mar Trumbull is our team.
Excellent. So Colleen, you can um, put Alan back down to attendees. Thank you.
Yeah.
We're transitioning to our new admin, so she's doing a great job.
Anything else, Karina?
Um, so um, I did provide the draft decisions for the ma- uh, major site plan approval and for the special permit of low impact development um, to Diane. Um, and I believe Diane emailed me back and said that they didn't have any further concerns. Um, I wanted to bring up that um, uh, uh, Open Space Preservation Commission Chair, Freddie Gillespie, and I um, had a Zoom meeting with Diane to discuss the um, the uh, seed mix uh, for the project that's identified on the landscape plan. And during that discussion, um, it was agreed to that they would update the landscape plan. Um, and that's what is, has been um, uploaded for the public to see under news and announcements on the planning board webpage. Um, and basically the changes were to update the legend to indicate that the um, the seed mix would be one hundred percent native uh, straight native species of, uh, to New England. And then there were two callouts on the plan that identified those areas and they reflect back to that legend. So those were the three changes and um, so the other plan sheets remain the same, but when the final plans are provided, this new sheet will be um, so the other plan sheets remain the same, but when the final plans are provided, this new sheet will be, um, put in place as opposed to the old landscaping sheet. And that's all we have.
Very good. Diane, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you to the planning board. We don't have any, um, new items or any changes.
Or any more to say?
Or any more to say?
So at this point, it would open, open up to the board, then to the public. And then if we get through that process, we would look at closing the, uh, public hearing. Uh, Mr. Mills?
Just to note, John, there would be three waivers under the lid that need to be granted.
Let's, let's do those now then.
Okay. Colleen, if you could bring up the decision of the special permit under three, uh, under, um, One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University. At the bottom of the list, there should be two decisions, and it's the one for the lower impact development.
And those three waivers, we went over, um, in our previous hearing and, um, and those haven't changed. I believe at that time, everyone was okay with them. So, um, we'll just take a look at them and then vote them one at a time, uh, to be granted.
And if you go to page four, you'll see, there it is.
Mr. Mills?
Can't see it. Um. Hold on, I'm trying to pull it up.
Make it a bigger.
All right. I think I got it. Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Planning Board grants, uh, the waiver for section 3.11 of the Rules and Regulations for Lit Special Permit Water Balance calculation as requested by the applicant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the waiver, uh, for section 3 dot 12 of the Rules and Regulations for Lit Special Permit Hydraulic Assessment as requested by the applicant.
Second. Hydrogeologic.
Oh, hydrogeologic, sorry.
Big word. Well, second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell.
Houlihan, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the waiver from a zoning, uh, 174 dash 13 dot 3 dot EJ, uh, lid techniques. Um, as requested by the applicant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we've got the waivers resolved. Anything else, um, Karina, before we close the public hearing? Anyone from the public? Any last questions or comments?
Uh, let me just take a look. There's any. Uh, we currently have nine attendees. And I don't see anyone's hand raised.
So the motion would be to close, uh, the public hearing for site plan and then a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit for lid. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We close the public hearing for One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University, uh, Collection Storage Building, a major site plan approval. That's it.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing for the site plan. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, public hearing, site plan is closed. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We close the public hearing for One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University Collection Storage Building, special permit for lid.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Oh, Mills, yes. Sorry.
Stein, yes.
Latrell.
Houlihan, yes.
Public hearing's closed. Um, so now, uh, the motion would be to grant the, uh, site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the site plan approval for One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University Collection Storage Building, major site plan approval with conditions as discussed and, uh, agreed upon by both the applicant and the town.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes. And thank you to the applicant.
Houlihan, yes.
Site plan's approved. Um, let's move on to approve, uh, granting the special permit. The motion would be to grant the special permit for lower impact development. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, the planning board approve or grant the special permit for One Pine Hill Drive, Harvard University Collection Storage Building, special permit for LID with waivers and conditions, uh, just, uh, reviewed, or at least waivers just approved by the planning board and, uh, conditions again that were, uh, discussed and agreed upon by both the applicant and the town.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell.
Houlihan, yes.
Um, Diane and the rest of your team, uh, we are already using this, what, what you submitted, how you submitted it, the quality of the, the submission, um, and your performance during the public hearings as a model, um, to compare other applicants, um, and hopefully have them, um, try to get to the high bar that you've, uh, performed for this, this project. It's not a huge project, but they're all different and yet they're all somewhat the same. Have to go through each of the steps and you guys have done it very professionally, very efficiently. And we, we very much appreciate it. Look forward to working with Harvard in the future. Any other questions or comments?
I second that. Thank you so much. I, I just want to, um, on behalf of our team, um, thank you very much, um, to, um, the town planner and town staff and the planning board for your guidance and, uh, support on this project. Thank you.
Wish you luck with it.
It's great working with you all. Thank you.
And I'll follow up with you or you can follow up with me tomorrow, the next day on, on getting the final plans in for endorsement and those, um, administrative requirements.
I will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 156 Northborough Road. You received information late today on this, which hopefully will keep this agenda item very short.
Yes. Um, so Michael Quinn, as you know, was representing, um, cane-built at 156 Northborough Road, the contractor-based project that was previously permitted. Um, uh, he had hired, uh, Peter Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants to prepare as-built plans. Um, they recently, uh, just before the holidays, submitted, uh, as-built plans. I have since forwarded them to Fussin O'Neil to get an estimate, um, uh, for their cost to review those, um, as-builts, which would require, uh, you know, onsite inspection and a report to see, um, to make sure that they're in compliance. Um, as you know, uh, Mimi and, uh, the Open Space, uh, Preservation Commission Chair Freddie and I and Melissa Danza have met on occasion at the site uh, with the concern of the, um, non-compliance of the landscaping. So, um, I did speak to Fussin O'Neil to ensure that they have a landscape architect on their team, which they do, um, who I will, um, reiterate again that they involve that person to be part of the inspection to ensure that the plantings are, um, where they need to be. Um, it is still my understanding, although I haven't received anything in writing, that the owner wants to proceed with condo units there as opposed to rental units. So, um, he said, Michael Quinn indicated he'll be providing me a letter by the end of the week, um, as to the project status, so that we know exactly what their direction is. Uh, once we receive, um, the estimate from Fussin O'Neil for as-built review, I'll convey that to the owner. Um, and they'll have to provide me with a check to make that happen. And all this is in preparation, um, because they are seeking a certificate of occupancy, um, which Town Council, um, indicated they need to modify their CBA permit, special permit, and also the major site plan approval to change those conditions, um, to reflect a condo, unit ownership approach versus a rental tenant landlord, which has been integrated into the conditions for both those permits. So, um, he, he asked to be placed on the next agenda, um, because he was sick last week as well and, um, will provide us a letter and we'll take it the next step at the next meeting to see where they officially want to proceed. But they did say they would be submitting modification. And that's the update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the board? Go ahead, Mimi.
So the as-built doesn't show the landscaping. Is that normal?
It shows some, it shows a plant list and I met with the owner and Michael Quinn and did a quick look at it and I said, you understand that, you know, what you're asking me to go to review does not appear to be complete with the landscaping. And they said, yes. And I said, well, I'll move forward and at least I'll get an estimate of what it will cost to have the as-built reviewed. Um, so we should get an idea of that. Yes, I agree. And I, I also feel like that, um, when we first met with them, they were replacing some of the plants and then had indicated that they were going to replace more plants in the spring when they have a chance. So there was discussion of a potential bond. But we still don't have a letter or anything from them that indicates this is the path they're taking. And I think, um, Andrew Mills had asked for that at one of the previous discussions that we had, um, at, when this first came up. You know, what, what is your approach? Uh, so I got legal opinion based on, you know, my understanding of it, but we still don't have anything in writing that says what they plan to do. So until we get that, I'm just basically getting an estimate from Fussin O'Neil, what a typical as-built review would take for a project of this size.
And also one of the rain gardens is cut off? So that doesn't show all of them? The last one?
I think if you look at the top of the plan, they, they, they cut the, a match line of the plan to the right of the sheet.
Oh, okay.
And that top, yeah, yeah. Right.
Yeah, because they, uh, Michael Quinn assured us that they were going to remove all the non-natives and replace them with straight species native as required in the plan. So I was concerned that they letter from the engineer said that it's good enough as it is.
Yeah, that was troubling because they said, well, it's their opinion. It's good enough. So that's not really compliance. Um, and, you know, again, that'll be reviewed by Fussin O'Neil, um, with the emphasis that the landscaping has to be, um, closely paid attention to because it was such an important component of the site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, 156 Northborough Road?
No, thanks for the update, Karina.
Oh, you're welcome. One long sentence.
If not, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the public shade tree removal policy and tree bylaw proposal. That would be Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you. So, um, as you know, Southborough is a tree city and in 2019, we adopted, um, chapter 153 to our town code, which which required us to comply with Mass General Laws, um, chapter 87 with regards to public shade trees. And there's been, um, some misunderstanding on what complies and what doesn't. So at the last planning board meeting, I, um, asked if the planning board would be in favor of, um, submitting a tree bylaw to this current warrant, which would clarify some terms and kind of close some loopholes. And, um, so I did. So the, uh, the tree bylaw, I, um, plagiarized from other towns. Most of it is, uh, Provincetown and there's Cambridge and Crafton and other towns, uh, pulled in there. But basically it just, um, tightens up the requirements of, um, chapter 87. Also, the scenic, uh, road uh, under Mass General Laws, um, the requirements that everything in the, uh, trimming or cutting or removal of, uh, public shade trees on scenic roads must be a consolidated hearing, um, with the tree warden and the planning board. Um, has some definitions. Um, so hopefully just tighten some things up.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mimi. Let's go to, well, Marnie. So, discussion item. So just chime in.
Yeah, just, it's more just a question of process and iteration, Mimi. So, um, how would you like us to? I, I know what's in here is a PDF. Do you want us to go through or do you want me to go through and review or, you know, what is this process? And then in the warrant, you know, there's that specific language that you have to put it in just to make sure that that's all, because I've been burned on that before. So make sure that that's in the right language. But would you like us to spend time on this and iterate or, or is it pretty, where are you?
Sure. Um,
Okay.
I can send out the Word version if you want to make comments on it. I've already received, um, some comments from other people just, you know, wordsmithing and clarifying things. Um, so I'll take everyone's comments and put them all together and have a, uh, edited draft for the next meeting if you want.
Yeah, perfect.
So would you like those comments all to come to planning and culminate it into one doc? You want to just take them member by member as they come in? Just send them to you, member by, you know, each member can send their comments to you or?
Sure. And I, I'll compile them all into one document.
Okay. If you need help with that, let us know. But also, um, I just want to point out the, um, update on the scenic road status.
That's the next discussion, I know.
Next one. Okay. You're right.
Thank you for doing that, Mimi.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me.
Excellent work. Um, and the way, and that's the way to do it, really. Uh, don't reinvent the wheel. Look at, look at the success, uh, stories in other towns and, uh, apply them as, as applicable to Southborough. And that's what you did. Hopefully it'll move on. Now, what we saw, um, uh, there was an email, Karina, that you sent us reflecting the, uh, uh, selectmen's thinking about bumping the town meeting from the last Saturday in March to a warm weather, warmer, uh, weather date.
For an outdoor venue.
Yeah, so they'll, we, we will, uh, need to advertise, um, I would hope, a public hearing for this shade tree. It's not zoning, but, um, I think we did the same thing when we had, uh, the warrant article for Tree City. So if not-
Would you like a public hearing for, for this warrant article?
Yeah, I, I would think so. It's a great way to get the word out and, and give people an opportunity to provide input. And if it's not well-received, we may have to make some revisions during the public hearing. All
Good idea.
All in view of, of the public, so they can see how we, how we have the, the document evolved to a point at the, at the town meeting.
I also have a question, just for clarity, because a lot has gone on in the last few, three weeks. And as far as the public shade tree removal policy, does that, does this bylaw mean we won't have to address that document? In other words, this tree bylaw, this proposed tree bylaw will incorporate those types of issues, so we don't need that policy?
Correct, this will replace the policy. And one more thing I forgot to mention, in the, the draft that I sent out, I had mentioned there was a section of consolidated hearings before the Concom on public shade trees that were within their jurisdiction. And I questioned whether the Concom wanted to participate in that or not. And I went to the last Concom hearing and discussed with them. And they, they do want that paragraph to stay in there and they do want to participate in that.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Anything else on this? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next discussion item. Scenic Road Proposed Warrant Article.
I just want to thank Mimi again and I look forward to really diving into it. Thank you, Mimi.
Go ahead, Karina, on the scenic road.
The scenic road. You might recall a couple of years ago, Sarah and I started researching the scenic roads and what was scenic road. And so we researched and researched and all that we came up with for feedback were those two warrant articles of 75 and 76. Well, recently, resident Deb Demoria had put in a request to the town clerk to provide her with any materials or warrant articles that included the term scenic. And so those were provided to her. And in her research, she found that in 1978, Article Number 41, which followed the other articles, actually did say all the scenic roads, all the roads in Southborough, except that, you know, the numbered routes are scenic roads. So strike that prior information. This is new information we have now, so that we can go back to what previously was understood to be the condition. It's just that we hadn't found any information documenting that. And we had gone to Town Council, et cetera, at the time and nothing was found regarding this. So this is updated news. So it does fall in line with then Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C. And there's the warrant article, Number 41, at the bottom of the page, showing that in 1978.
Karina, does that mean that only roads that were around in 1978 are scenic? Or is that still, or does that cover new roads that have been added?
Well, this is the question. So we may have to ask Town Council for his opinion on how this warrant article applies, because there are new roads since 1978. So is it simply just reiterating the same article again at a town meeting that will include everything to this date? Or does this old one, Article Number 41, take into account anything in the future as well? So if somebody reads the article and it becomes, you know, that's the law, local law of the land, that everyone has an understanding when they create a new road, that it becomes scenic?
Karina and I talked about this this afternoon and agreed that tonight we would ask the board's opinion relative to your question, Andrew, in the form of a legal opinion request for a couple of questions. One would be, can we use the, the same language in the 2022 warrant article as was used back in 1978? Can we use that same language? And then ask Council if he thinks that any new roads fall under this and therefore we don't have to do anything? Or if not, how do we update and include the new roads? There's dozens of them since 1978. So that's a question to the board tonight. Do you, do we want the town planner to prepare a legal opinion request so that we can be properly guided on what we want to accomplish, which is to have all the non-numbered roads in town be scenic roads? That's the, that's the proposed article.
I'd be in favor of that.
I would too.
Me three. Well, then that's four.
Make it five. So Karina, you got enough info to do that, right? I think Jay would just have to look at the three, the 1975, 76, and 78 stuff. But also, I guess, check with the state law or whoever, or whatever the definition. If, if none of that has changed since back in the 70s, that's fine. But if the, we should know that. But if the scenic road designation has different authorities or definitions now in 2022, we should know that and make sure that we properly apply whatever's appropriate to what we, to what we want to do.
Okay. I'll check and I'll submit a legal opinion request.
And I might be stating the obvious, but if he comes back and says it only applies to the roads from 1978, whatever we put forward, I would think we'd only want to designate those new roads. So if someone at town meeting wanted to make something different from what was in the past, that we keep it to just the new ones.
That, that's a good question to, to counsel to see if, if we have to specifically list those roads or just refer to them by date, any roads accepted after April of 1978, so on.
Well, wouldn't you just have a new warrant article that just says the same statement that all roads in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 40, 15C, are scenic? Would you have to differentiate between the old and the new? You were just saying everything now in town that qualifies under the Mass General Law is scenic.
Everything new from 1978.
Well, why not before that if?
Because if, if it fails, then is that going to trump what will happen in 78? And now, none of the roads are scenic.
That's right, good point. I didn't see that.
That's why we submit a legal opinion request.
All right.
Try to keep it, try to keep it as clean as possible, just for the new ones. If we're comfortable with what 78 says, I think we should focus just on the newer ones.
Okay.
Keep it simple.
So as not to invalidate what already exists?
Exactly. You never know what happens at town meeting, right?
Right. We all set with that one? Move on to the next item? Other business properly before the board, Planner's Report, Karina.
All right, just quickly. There's a few things here. Dawn already mentioned the potential delay in the annual town meeting. As soon as I have updated information, I'll forward that to the planning board so that they are aware. There is a draft recording clerk policy that was prepared by Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, regarding recording clerk services for permitting executive and finance boards. So it's my understanding that the, the general gist of the policy is that they only want permitting boards, executive and finance boards, to be able to hire or a recording clerk. The other committees in town and boards would have to use a, a member of their committee to take the meetings and then make sure that they're submitted to the town clerk to meet open meeting law. I know in the past that for many committees, this is quite a hurdle because these are typically all volunteer positions and the task of recording minutes doesn't allow you to participate as well in the meeting itself. And then the work it takes then to finalize the meeting minutes and get them into town is at least one-to-one for the time the meeting is held, if not more. So I'm not particularly on board with the policy, but I understand, you know, the costs incurred for every board and committee to have a a recording clerk can probably add up quite a bit. So we have Kate, who provides Planning Board Master Plan and SHOPCY, and we have a contract with Kate through the end of this fiscal year. The new policy would instead a $50 per hour rate based on the number of hours of, of a meeting. And that is to, and the, and the, and the information behind that is that it's really $25 an hour. So if you have a three-hour meeting, it's three-hour meetings and they anticipated three hours of work after the meeting to prepare the, the document. But you can track actual meeting hours easier than you can track various recording clerks and the time they spend afterward. So they set it at $50 an hour, kind of double the rate, but just count the hours that are at a meeting. Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this works out for planning, okay? Because our meetings are typically less than, are not typically less than two and a half hours, as you can see tonight, and this has been a relatively quick meeting.
Jinx us tonight.
Yeah, knock on, sorry. So where it does impact is Master Plan Committee. However, we are set through the end of the fiscal year and the master plan will probably come, you know, is winding down. SHOPCY, which is an extremely active committee right now, would be most impacted as far as planning is concerned. Although it's a Board of Selectmen-appointed committee, the planning board, under their budget, has taken on the Recording Secretary Services to help SHOPCY, which, since Dorian Jazinski has been the chair, has really become quite active in trying to pursue affordable housing in town. So that's where I think we'll be impacted the most. But again, we offered to carry those costs in order to help SHOPCY because of the affordable housing initiatives that, you know, we all support. So if you have any comments on this policy, I spoke with Board of Selectmen Chair Lisa Rochio on this when I got the policy. And, you know, she kind of gave me the background on it. And she was kind enough to say that we could discuss this this evening if you had any input or feedback before the Board of Selectmen take a vote on supporting this policy. You know, with the understanding that the planning board is an elected board and their budget operates somewhat differently than, you know, other budgets. So that's what I have. If, if you, if you want to open, if you want to discuss this now or if you have any comments or if you want to attend the Board of Selectmen meeting to, to, I can always post an agenda if more than two of you want to attend that. Just looking for some feedback, because I certainly don't want to lose Kate as our Recording Secretary because she's done a fantastic job and everything has been running really smoothly. Our meetings are in on, our minutes are in on time. They're accurate, they're descriptive, they're a great resource for future. You know, looking back on and seeing what was actually discussed and who said what and all that. So I really don't want to lose that, that ability.
So has everyone seen that policy, draft policy? I guess not. So Karina and I went over it and it's basically the 50 bucks an hour based on the duration of the actual meeting. So not sure how that works for us. I think it's somewhat restrictive. Our meetings are sometimes very technical and complex. And for a Recording Secretary to capture that complexity takes time. And again, this, it include, this policy includes the planning board. But we, I think we are also have the option, because we're an elected board and we have our own separate budget that's approved at town meeting, that we could respectfully ask to be excluded from the policy and put in our budget what we think is fair and appropriate to keep a, a Recording Secretary. So maybe we should hear from Kate or not, if you don't want to speak, Kate. But I, I'm quite comfortable with asking to be excluded from the policy and have the board address this line item in our annual budget. Kate, did you want to say anything?
Um, no, I'm good. I appreciate this being on the agenda. I enjoy being the Recording Secretary of you all. You are excellent to me and I appreciate that. I will say, it's a lot of work, it's a hard job. Because as you did say, there are lots of technical details. I'm often reading a lot of the documents, as you all are, to make sure I know what I'm talking about. So the three-hour-plus meetings take a significant amount of time. So when those, I'm able to bill for $150. You know, that, I'm certainly not making a whole lot of money on those particular meetings. And I feel like then, when we have shorter meetings, that rate of $150 a meeting is offset. So it sort of evens itself out, which is why it's really been a no-brainer for me to just sign that contract with Karina every year, because I feel like that's a very, very fair rate for the work involved. So thanks for having this on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Any comments or questions from the board, Andrew?
No, you know, I think I've known Kate for a while now and she's done an excellent job. And I agree, we wouldn't want to lose her because the meeting minutes we've had in the past have, you know, I guess, Dawn, you and I have seen, it, it could take 20, 30, 40 minutes to go over meeting minutes in some cases, when we've had to go through them. So I might not state it all the time, but Kate, I really appreciate your note-taking for this.
I appreciate that, I'm, I really do. You guys are great to me. And I will say, it's, it's important. And I know sort of from working on the town clerk end of things too. It's, it's a legal document and my name is signed to it. So I try to take some extra care with that, keeping that in mind.
Well, you, if you guys haven't seen the policy, you need to see it. And, you know, either we go along with it and think it's, it's okay for our workload or we don't go along with it and we take our chances with our own budget. So you need to see it and- Or we don't go along with it and we take our chances with our own budget, so you need to see it and. You know, maybe we would go go along with it for the for for the next fiscal year and see how it works out, go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, so I guess two questions, so SOPs kind of are put in place, there's a like a challenge that are is trying to be solved for some. Equity that's trying to be established, so I think the understanding of rationale for the SOP, like why was an SOP put forward? And the second is that to to Kate's point here, I mean. You know, however, let's just say we have twenty meetings in a year. Maybe twenty four meetings in the year, I think they err more on the greater than four to five hour meetings. So I'm a little worried if we're kind of, i- are we standing to like a specific rate and locking in on a certain. This it's if we average at three hours, that's what it would be, because I'd be in favor of actually paying people for the hours that they actually work. And I understand that the the challenge of. Being able to kind of figure out what that would be, you know, is it is it six hours, is it eight hours? But, you know, I also, I I, we have these people in the business and professional world and we have kind of a system of tracking time and I. Part of me feels like, you know, Kate should be compensated for the full amount of time, and I don't know if I'm really all for. What the the town would say, I think if we have our own budget, we should. We should control what we want for a legal document that has ex- extensive technical in it. So I'm kind of of the the mindset that we wouldn't be part of the policy, but I will review it. But I didn't know if anyone had the rationale for why, like, what's the problem being solved for?
Uh, well, I can, I can tell you this, oh, Mimi, let me just interject real quickly, that Lisa explained to me that. Well, I thought about this and in Kate's. Particular case here, with the meetings going two and a half hours, she would be paid. For three, so she would get see the hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. Typically with the planning board meetings, and if they go over three hours, she gets paid more. So in Kate's role as the planning board recording secretary, it will work, I I believe it would work out. Equal, if not better for Kate, because our meetings are not very short. I think where we have the problem is more related to, you know, covering shop see. And if we're not going to assist shop see with it, then it's not a problem, but. I don't think Kate would be on board with, you know, an hour meeting with shop see and then. The meeting minutes don't just take another hour to complete, right, and that's where the problem is. So for other committees that she's working on right now that I have contract with her. That's where she'd be shortcutting. I think with planning board, the policy would probably work out in equal or better for Kate, so. But, you know, it's hard to tell, it it it's really would be, you know, you're now under this, would be under this new policy. And not twenty five. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can't resist, Kate, does this mean you would want longer meetings?
No, absolutely not.
I can stretch things out. Only kidding, of course, that's a joke. Kate does a great job and. Yeah, we want to keep her.
And Lisa has her hand up, just so you know, John, I know Mimi has a question, but Lisa Bracio also has her hand up, not to forget her.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Mimi.
So, um, my understanding was that this was just to establish some equity. Because there was a flat rate of a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting and our meetings are. You know, four or five hours long and then there are meetings that are thirty minutes long in the in the. Scribe gets paid the same for both, so it was trying to. Establish some equity, and I think that the Board of Selectmen would have preferred that. Everybody get a minute taker, but when they ran the numbers of how much it would cost. They decided that only permitting boards and finance boards, so that's. That's, I think, the rationale behind the policy. And as far as master plan, this is more.
God willing, that's gonna end.
It is going to end.
God willing.
This is more incentive to be done by. But so Kate, so do you think that you'll take a, it'll be a pay cut for you on doing planning board meetings?
Uh, not on planning, no.
But you'll lose the other committees.
Yes, yeah, and and I would say I understand it to the extent with certain boards or other committees. But. Things like shop see, even if the meeting's an hour and a half or master plan or two hours, they're very detailed, they're very technical. Even just listening to the YouTube video for master plan, the last one, and then doing the minutes, it still took well over three hours to do. But I would only get paid for that, the two hours, which would be, you know, the hundred dollars. So that's where it gets a little complicated, because it's, you know, it's it's very detailed, it's a it's a ton of work for. The more technical meetings.
Yeah, and I I just want to reiterate that you do a fabulous job. I've gone back looking for information like. From the planning board for old meetings, the before Kate meetings, and I can't figure out what those minutes are talking about.
I I do understand, I see a lot of interesting minutes, but I, you know, and I do really enjoy doing it. But like I said, it's also, you know, my name is associated with it too, and it's a legal document, so I I definitely need to be comfortable with it myself. So it it's hard and it is hard to attend, I mean, I'm on other boards and committees and stuff too, and to be a clerk. Is is a real job, you can't really participate effectively as a clerk either.
And I can say that Kate attends the majority of the meetings, it's very rare that. She does not attend the actual meeting and get the full feel of the meeting and, you know, as opposed to just viewing the YouTube.
And allegedly someday these might go back to in person when I would really have to go all the time.
About Lisa?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak, I just wanted to take a second, Mimi actually hit the nail on the head, Marnie. The genesis of this is, we constantly have boards and committees that have smaller budgets that want to have a minute taker as well. Most of us have served on other boards and committees over time as well, I took open space minutes for twelve years. It's trying to find equity, I mean, the Board of Selectmen, I'll use that as an example, for most of last year, our meetings ranged from four to five hours. So for a minute taker to get a hundred and fifty dollars just doesn't seem fair when. A one hour meeting may get a hundred and fifty dollars, so it was trying to find an equal balance, because ultimately, everybody. Would like to have a minute taker, and I don't disagree, it would be great to do it, but the cost when we averaged it out was between twenty and forty thousand dollars a year. Which is a tough hurdle, especially now to go and ask the taxpayers for, so we were trying to find a way that. You know, for the meetings over three hours, because that really was the the basis for the hundred and fifty dollars, it was kind of based on a three hour meeting. And it was just trying to find fairness in, you know, if planning board goes for hours, then Kate has the opportunity to make an extra fifty dollars, which wasn't on the table before. So it was just about trying to find a way to tell a minute taker that's taking five hour meetings. You know, versus somebody that's taking less that, you know, you're valued as well, so it was just all about equity, this. Certainly isn't easy to institute, I know, you know. I know shop see's not happy about it, but you know, there are a lot of boards and committees that are doing a lot of fine work for this town. The capital committee has three different members, they switch off, it's it's very technical and and. Financial, the business and the work that they're doing, and and it gets done, and and the minutes are pretty doggone detailed. So I commend everybody that tries to participate in a meeting and take the minutes, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do by any means. But we have over twenty boards and committees that are doing it, so. That was kind of the genesis for all this, we were getting more and more requests for. You know, people to be able to do it, but you know, when you're looking at somebody that's got a two thousand dollar budget. It's kind of tough to put eighteen hundred dollars and and stop the good work that they're doing, but at the same time, it's it's hard to ask the taxpayers to. You know, we're we're going back and forth right now about whether we're going to fund a fifth dispatcher, you know, and. If you try to average it out, it's it's tough, it's it's tough on everybody, and we just felt that we really had to do something to bring some level of equity. It's nothing against the people that take minutes, because again, I did it for twelve years and I know how tough it is, and I didn't do a planning board. You know, that's very, very technical, so I completely understand and. I just thought it was important that you understand the rationale behind it, it was it was nothing about anybody specific, but just trying to be fair to everyone. So, thank you and thank you for allowing me to share that information.
Super helpful, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Anything else on this anymore? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
So is there any action you need to take on that, Don? Or is that, that's just the opinion, we're going to let this go and try it for a year?
Oh, see what the selectmen, what the selectmen want to do with it, I mean, there's five of them. Focused on the planning board workload, we heard Kate say that she's okay with that. I suppose it's within our ability to say, we're not going to take shop see meeting meeting minutes anymore out of our budget. Or. Whatever. So I suppose we'll. Initially, I guess, just. See what the selectmen say, and if they leave it the way it is and. Want us to try the policy, then. Sounds like we're willing to give it a try.
Okay, because the fiscal year twenty three budget, you know, has budgeted for shop see, so. I I'm not sure whether that will take the budget.
No, I I think we should leave that. Think we should leave it. We stopped playing around with our, just based on things that haven't been resolved yet, and also. We're responsible for the budget, we submit it, we ask the townspeople to approve it. And we have total, virtually total control of our own budget. And anything that. Is in our budget. That we don't have full control of is. Something the board should be sensitive to. Starts with one little thing and the next thing you know. The elected planning board is not as. Control of its own destiny. Going forward. It's just something that we should always be. Aware of, and of course. Needless to say, planning board has a long history of being a team player with the other boards and. In the town government. Next item.
We have some MBTA communities. Guidance, I received an email from town council that they'll be providing feedback and. Town council has already provided some documentation for that, that's something that's going to be required for the town to take on, and shop see is spearheading. Some of that work, just so you know. Annual report for the planning board was provided to the board select, to the executive admin. Melanie, so she's taking care of that for the annual report. If I'm missing anything, please let me know, I think that's it for this evening.
Next item was approval of meeting minutes.
Chairman, make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion?
I have one little, little picky on you. Line two twenty one, the last word in the sentence should be is and not if.
As usual, the minutes are a mess.
I'll fix that, Mimi, thank you.
So it's not even a, it's not even a whole word, you only had one letter. Is he good, Kate? Post's been made in second, any discussion, hearing none all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Dan, yes?
Oh, Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Uh, our next meeting is the twenty fourth. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Colleen.
Hi.
You gonna show up for work tomorrow?
But, yes.
Are you done? You still with us?
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm loving this job, this is good, I like it.
Okay, excellent.
Congratulations on your first meeting.
How'd I do? You did great.
Excellent.
Great, love having you. Any more discussion?
Uh, you know, the the one thing I I would like to say, I know it was referenced a little bit with Harvard, but. I I do agree, we should keep that in our back pocket, the next time someone complains about how long it takes for something to. Get through with the planning board, I mean, just looking at how many meetings we had, that was the only the third meeting we had with them.
Hundred percent correct.
You know, so I I didn't want to. You know. Tout it that much compared to, you know, the other two applicants tonight were taking longer and. You know, there's always reasons and everything, but if if a group is organized and everything. I think it's very clear that we are not the obstacle. To get things done. So I I just want to restate that, and I know you, others said it too, but. I I totally agree with everyone and I I think we somehow. And Karina, I don't mean to push this on you, but I think you get a lot of the questions from people coming in, be like. Whether it be other committees in town or departments or whatever. If you just. I would be in favor of you. You know, using this as a great example of how we can get things done if people have all their ducks in a row, that's all.
Yeah, I've already been trying to push that narrative.
Yeah, great, well, I figured as much, but it makes me feel better than that.
Well, we did a a little bit of a research study a couple of years ago to see. Because because people were saying that it takes forever to get through the South Row Planning Board, so we looked at some other towns. And how long it takes from the minute that the application is accepted. Stamped by the town clerk. And when the vote to approve occurs and. We're certainly not. Any any longer. Than the other towns that we looked at, in many cases were a lot shorter. But what happens is we get these. And and Karina said this to me the other day, no good deed goes unpunished. And we 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 accepted and we launched, we accepted the application and we launched on the public hearing. With incomplete materials and a promise that, oh, you'll, you know, we'll update that plan or we'll get you that plan. And and it it this, it either never happens or it trickles in and it causes the whole thing to drag out. And then eventually, of course, the project is 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 approved, a vast majority approved. And then it's put, it's in the record and people in the future, they don't remember the defective. Plans, the incomplete stuff, the. Changes. All that, they don't remember that, what they look at is, oh, that project took twelve months to get approved. Oh, that project took nine months. And it's just. There's no. They don't peel it back to see why. And and it's easy for people to to just say, oh, it takes forever. Well, guess what, we're part of forever, it's our time, we're sitting here going over these meetings. Meeting after meeting, making very little or no progress. And, you know, I see your frustration, my own frustration. You wonder why the. The proponents put up with it. I don't know.
Anyway, that was my last comment.
Karina. Colleen, you can stop recording at any time, I think, once the meeting.
We haven't adjourned yet. Did we adjourn?
No, we didn't take the discussion. Mr. Mills brought up a discussion item.
Oh, that's right, all right, excellent, good.
And it was, and it was related to an earlier agenda item, so if there's nothing else, I guess. Emotions are made in seconded, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Diane, yes.
Latrell, yes. Houlihan, yes.
Good night, all.
Out of here.
Good catch, Colleen.
Right on top of this.
Colleen, nice job.
Thanks. You guys have a good night.
Thanks. You too.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, Colleen.
Bye, Kate.